I'll probably need to order seven P M and if you can rise the potential legion as you are able.
To apply the United States of America into the Republic for which standards one is by the government. Any useful with liberty and justice for all.
Who is your Roman absent, who should do I?
President.
Commissioner pride.
President.
Show we find absent, commissioner Vazati.
Rose.
Commissioner Agar.
Present.
Commissioner Ross.
Present.
Thank you. You have the meeting minutes from July fourteenth, twenty twenty five. I think we have very absent there. Um, but you guys in review. And if there's any addition changes, please let me know. I've got ten minutes. I follow. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about that.
It's all look good. I thought it was getting through a second.
Yeah, you want.
I'm ready.
Yeah, this is true too.
I was on vacation.
Yeah, brother.
Or stick one of those in my heart. So we can read for seconds.
Sentence.
There we go. So we had to call for seven P M by chair on line. One second. Hey Christine. That's fine. We started the meeting um and when you get here, you get here. Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, we. Well, half heard commissioner Iger Ross were absent. So we have the meeting minutes, commissioner from unapproved it, commissioner do I seconded, and then we had all voting in favor of it. All right, I got the permission of rights. It was absent. Well, you were absent last. Sure. Yeah, I think you are. So I'll fix that. Then we have public comments by Mr. Emery. And then we wanted to new business reviewing the fat subdivision. Uh, commissioner do I motion to approve it? Commissioner Rosati seconded to approve it. Motion uh vote was made. And then we had the resource bank one. Similar language where I presented the request. Commissioner Klein motion and commissioner do I seconded. No business and then I stated that there will be no meeting on eleventh and then, you know, twenty fifth to talk about the zone catch burdens. And then we adjourned.
We have a copy of this in a.
I forgot to print it out, but you're right. Got a copy of it in your email.
Yeah, I thought I seen.
Yeah, sorry about that.
You're fine. You're fine.
So yeah.
So I'll I'll move to. Approve the meeting minutes with the small adjustment that we had to the roll calls.
Yep. One second.
So sorry.
Sorry.
I'm just writing a pattern. I'm like, oh, my gosh, who's calling me?
You could step over now.
Yeah.
Oh. Okay. Very sorry, everyone. I apologize.
Okay.
Um, all in favor of proven minutes with a noted change.
Hi.
Any opposed? I think you. Nobody signs for public comments, but I'll turn it over to your chair on the client. You can run the meeting now. We are at new business item six A.
Okay. So case number P Z C twenty five dash zero eight published meeting. Um, regarding. One, two, three, four pin numbers from Hampshire West LLC, otherwise known as Crown Community Development. Quest for final plat of subdivision approval for Prairie Ridge North neighborhoods W X and Y. Background.
So this was a clue back in. Twenty two thousand twenty three, there was a preliminary plat blue by the village of Prairie Ridge North. It had twenty seven neighborhoods. Twenty neighborhoods. Um, and piece by piece as the developer is ready to build a neighborhood, it comes. Comes into planning zoning commission and the village board for the part of that subdivision to actually create the lots. Um, we we create the lots and then uh they're built by builders either. Primarily has been D R Horton, Ryan, Silverthorne, the three major builders in town. So we want them most likely building it. Um, and W X and W and X are single family. And then Y is uh town homes. Those Y will be split into individual lots. So it will be for ownership instead of rental. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Um, so that's any caveat why it's a town home, but it will be individual lots uh for ownership. Uh, the past subdivisions have been generally have been reviewed by in the village engineer. And then general performance with all the requirements or just some minor comments that still need to be addressed. And then with Y, the switch from rental to individual lot ownership is being reviewed. But staff is comfortable presenting this to the planning zoning commission. And then to the village board in this current state with the conditions, does the village engineer sign off on the flats? Prior to recording with the county. Uh, this is similar a similar process that we go through. Um, with most of the past subdivisions, um, when there's just minor comments that need to be addressed. Um, I can pull up the class if if you guys would like. Um, this, I know there's an and a half by eleven, which I notice was the most logical for these areas. But I can pull up the plan on the T V if you guys have any questions specific to any neighborhoods.
Is everyone okay with neighborhoods?
Okay.
Any comments?
Um. Yeah, I think Mo did a good job as he always does. So um. Really, my only comment comments are uh, you know, this completes, I don't know, completes our march to Big Timber Road on the east side of Harmony uh for the last three neighborhoods. Um, as Mo said, it's statute of performance with plenty of plat. And that was within twenty twenty three, couple, you know, minor changes. Um, is the, we have uh our big timber road improvements. We have that into King County for approval right now. One of their requirements, one of their requests was that we get a a five hundred foot throw from their right away to our first entrance into our neighborhoods. So that is one minor difference from the original preliminary plat. We just moved those entrances in that neighborhood further south along the Sline Road. And then in neighborhood Y, um, we still the same number of units, but we we adjusted same type of units. We adjusted the. The buildings to uh conform to the plat of our buyer, right? So, you know, every builder has their own town home product and particularly when your. Son, it was the simple which every every built every unit, not building, but every unit is its own. You gotta be right on to their unit. So that was a change. But also we we shifted the the buildings around to avoid a wetland in that area, which is a good thing. Um, so that uh we were able to. Through some creative engineering, we were able to move the stormwater detention pond out of that part out of the wetland. The stormwater detention pond will still be uh naturalized. So it's like we're we're going to enhance the existing full quality wetland. And then we're going to build a wetland or a wetland based pond next to it. So the area is going to get better. Stuff, open space stays the same. Basically, number of unit counts stay the same, parks, everything else is pretty much the same. Those are just the minor changes. So have you taken any questions?
So then the on this survey here, does that?
Yes.
Wastewater treatment. Is that a facility? Yes.
Yeah, it's it's a stormwater detention pond.
Right off the main drive, right next to the.
Yes.
First homes.
Yes, and that was the one we had moved to avoid.
That's the.
Yeah, the what the pond was originally going to go. There's going to be buildings and the stormwater management facility within that wetland. And then working with um, working with staff and the county, actually, uh, we were able to. Remove both of them with the wetlands, so we can preserve that well, which is like the goal.
And just to clarify, why is going all in as be simple?
Yes.
Okay.
Similar to neighborhood. Down the road, um, end of Kelly, I I can't remember what we called it near. But uh, um, at the end of Kelly Road. The townhouse is over there. That way those were be simple as well.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions? Okay, then I will ask for a motion to recommend um. Approval of the request for the final plat of subdivision approval for Prairie Ridge North neighborhoods W X and Y.
Let me get that motion.
One second.
Any other further discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner do I?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Um, you don't want chair when we find. Commissioner Rosati?
Hi.
Commissioner Agar?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Okay, you're approved?
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. One more step.
They'll be they'll be watching wire. We don't know about that.
Right.
Your recommendation goes a long way. Right, right. Thank you.
Okay, so then um we are now looking at proposed zoning districts. Mo and company have been very busy working on. Giving up our zoning.
Yes, well, starting to. Work on it. There's a lot that needs to be done and. We will be due to after funding. Can't do a comprehensive update. We'll have to do P C O, but this is if it gets over more fun that way. Um, so these zoning districts were presented to you like a year ago, maybe at this point.
Mm hmm.
Um, nothing has changed. I just wanted to give you as a reference point to like what the general purpose of the zoning districts are moving forward. Or as proposed by staff, you guys can vote not to adopt them. So I can't say. And like uh like pages two and three, I gave you kind of more detailed purpose of each of the zoning districts. Um, any questions on? Those.
So did they decide that there's not any money to do a comprehensive?
So conference plan is different than the zoning code update.
Yes.
So conference plan, we are working, I think you've talked to maybe Dave Posato and President Reed. Um, we will be working on figuring out funding for a comprehensive plan.
Okay.
Thank you. Good money. Uh, but this is going to be done more in house. Through the planning zoning commission. Um, we could outsource it, but it'll be another hundred thousand, if not more. Uh, that we just don't have, but I've done these, I've done zoning tax moments in all communities I've worked in, so I feel confident that I. Work on these and present it to you on the village board um and come out with a good product. Conference plan is a little bit more in depth, requires a lot and always kind of good character. Uh, mutual. Company working for conference plan. But if there's no question on that, what I really want to focus tonight on is the land use table. But any questions?
I looking through and I was looking through the land use table and comparing it back to our bigger buckets. Of the queen of E.
E. What is Dave?
Thank you.
Why not just leave it enough?
Sorry, I'm I'm not going to die on that hill, so.
They they just, they seem very, very.
They're very similar, yes.
And I I understand what's in the name. Just try not to sleep in it. E allows for animals. No, it doesn't.
F.
F.
F would last for.
The estate lots like on Kelly Road, those allow for animals. And and the proposed it doesn't. It's a special.
So we'll be changing that.
So what are you going to do with all the current E's? So why not just attach all colon all L's? And just be done because um.
The different taxing.
Oh.
But that's up the killing. Different tax. What's the difference between E one, two and three?
Nothing.
That I that's why I combined E one, E two, E three to just E.
But but zoning and taxing are supposed to be.
Separate.
Supposed to be.
So the reason for E in my mind was it's unsub unsubdivided large lives.
Yes.
Well, it's like the it's like the ones that are.
Primarily for residential use. Where's farming to be um.
But this might be semantics, but F, the only. Words that are different is the incorporation of farming.
Incorporation of what?
If you read, if you read the purpose, it's the exact same purpose, but you added the word farming. That's it. So the E district was created for. Here's my opinion on why it was created. E was created so that there was a uh zoning classification that would allow. Residential tax base. But those people could still have animals and they weren't considered an agriculture property, so they wouldn't be taxed at the way lower farm tax rate. So that's why the E was created. We don't have that many, like Catcher Road and Kelly Road.
Let me fall to the right.
But that's why it was created because it is a residential zoning, but it allows for. Horses.
Get them up and down permanently too.
Yes.
Chasing harmony with my.
So we're going to sell all these residents. They can't have it anymore. They already solved it.
Well, no, they 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 stay the way it is. They.
Right. It would be if what would happen, most likely, correct me if I'm wrong, that if the property ever sells. Then the new owners would have to adhere to the zoning code.
The new.
I don't think you necessarily want them not to have horses. No.
And I'm not saying that, but.
Yeah, but in the rezoning, they can't have horses then. They can't have anything.
So any.
Yes.
Any property that currently has farming or livestock, call livestock, they can maintain it and do legal, not conforming. So. Just because you adopt a new zoning regulation doesn't automatically kick people out of what they can. They're allowed to, they're allowed, yeah, the grandfather, they're allowed to maintain the use that they have. Now, say I I stopped farming. And then I stole the land or after six months, because usually it's a six note provision. If I stop for six months, then the new zoning code kicks in and then I have to abide by that. As long as you maintain that use, you can continue it and you're not required to meet or.
They sell the property.
What about to a family member? As long as the use is just kept. Guys, it's a family member. Commissioner do I, as long as the use is maintained, you can continue it.
It's a lot of people, the selling point is, hey, you can have chickens here, you can have goats, you can have that.
And and right now the practice is you come in under default now.
Right, you come in as E one.
So who who currently holds that? What properties are currently ups?
Going up right now?
They would be changed to E's.
To Williger and Prairie.
Is one of them.
Per view.
No, Prairie Street. Seasonal. Uh, it was just sold. It was um O'Hara's.
Oh, O'Hara's.
And they sold it to one of the Dumblin daughters. So they have the vacant lot plus the big white barn and the big white.
That's all set.
One of the daughters, she's married to, I don't think her name's Dumblin anymore. Okay.
So we have. Oh, yeah, it looks different. I have F right here on just south of the industrial park, just north of Big Timber. Uh, James Farm. So this is James Farm by, you can't see my mouse.
I can't. I'm like, okay, if I really see it, I don't.
I can't see it.
I'm like.
Right corner. The yellow is teams farm. And that's big timber.
Yeah, it kind of.
Right soon.
So this, we have F one here.
With Myers, the dark black line right up against F one, right?
Yeah. When mine became a south or northeast corner.
So that's all the stuff that's behind Pet Ag and.
Yes.
That's the only F one.
And then we have F right here, south of James Farm.
And that's all going to turn into E.
Well, that's going to be kept as F.
F. Okay.
Anything that would be combined or the E, E one, E two, E three are being combined into E or what I suppose combined into E. And then we have just some farming here and we have some like small farming. Um, pieces throughout that aren't really far.
Right at the. Downy Island.
Yeah, that's the corner place on.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, that's the guy that came. Because he put his fence all the way to the front.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's still there, isn't it?
Is it? No. Or the the highlight green lady, see, kind towards the west end, that's not farming, it's school.
School?
It's a school property, but it's not farming. So that's. I want to consider that farming. In terms of land use.
Wait, there's farming use on Lux Street?
I have it.
By the elementary school.
By where?
Elementary school.
That makes no sense.
It is the school.
No, it's not. That's that's for residences. That's Myers, um, or not Myers, it's going to Warren's now. Uh, the red house.
They're on Prairie.
Yeah, they're on the the back side of that. Quick street that used to be.
Oh, yeah, that.
Chad Michelle's house. Um, I don't know who the current owners are. And then the the house with all of the Huskies.
Yeah.
So I will say as part of this, we would have to do a comprehensive like rezoning of. Look in, you know, how each plot was zoned and we. Like analyze that and say like, does it should be kept as this and should be changed to, because some of these single family are. Should be single family zoning instead of farming zoning. And then you also have, you know, some of these dark grounds. And I believe like R three, that could be, should be R two. Um. So that'll be another part of the exercises. Kind of going area by area, analyzing the zoning and make sure it has proper zoning and not what it was thirty, forty, fifty years ago. Which is going to be a big exercise going section lot by lot.
Um. What was your purpose of making E one, E two and E three? That you're saying.
Oh, that's what it is.
It's it is. Oh.
That's what it is. Yeah. E is what he's proposing is getting rid of the one, two and three that he had.
So yeah, the first column is what's in the code right now. The second column is what I'm.
Right, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, and that. Hmm. We're reducing the number of zoning districts.
So then I. E and R one, E is unsubdivided lots, R one is subdivided lots, but so large subdivided.
Yes, uh, when I present to you the.
It it's just different density.
The box scanners, yeah, it'll be a lot. R one will be a larger density than E.
Okay. I don't want to touch F just because.
Yeah, I, please, please don't touch it.
Yeah, please don't touch her.
That's why I was trying to touch E because it it doesn't make sense for both of those to exist in my mind, but if we're saying it's for giving. The powers that be. Tax and pay of things. Never mind. I don't want to, I don't want to go there. And I, for the whole mere fact of animals or no animals, I think you got to keep E. Well. At that point, are we saying E is yes, animals or conditionally you have to come here and spray in this? It's a special use.
That's what I was thinking.
What's your, what are you proposing?
So right now in E, I'm not, I'm not proposing any livestock farming or crop farming. That's just going to be for F.
Is there a way to add use for specifically?
Yeah, that's gonna really piss off.
What I mean, like.
Well, because.
I I don't want to dig for her, but I'm trying.
No kidding. No kidding. I agree. That would be, that would be.
Oh, wow.
Really?
Because it does look pretty slow.
Yeah, because I think it'd be hard to justify.
I don't think you can go to E, go straight to E. I think you need to keep the E's the way they are.
Oh, no, go straight to E. E one, E two, E three are all the same.
Okay.
You can go straight to E. You just, I would not eliminate E.
Okay. What about animals anyway?
Pigs in general. I lived near pig farms.
Now, wait, let me remember. Doesn't our E zoning specifically state? I think it it specifically names animals and I think it's only horses.
Well.
But that's. That's what she's talking about is here is that it doesn't.
This is.
No, 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 I get I I get that, but if we go with this.
Clarification.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, we can add, if if we have horses on there specifically, we can bring.
So in the E, the E one, in current E one district, which kind of populated to E two and E three. It says agriculture, which is in this district, showing me the cultivation of soil principally for the production of food products. But shown only through the following, the raising or dealing poultry, dogs, rabbits. Or other small animals or swine cattle or other livestock for business or commercial purposes. Except as incidental to a bona fide general farming operation.
So that doesn't allow horses right now.
Right.
But it allows pigs.
No, it does not.
As long as it's not, as long as it's not for commercial spelling, so they can have it privately, just not for commercial.
You can have a pet cow.
Right, or for reasons of commercial purposes, yeah.
So they can have their own chickens to feed themselves on these.
Right.
But if they're in the village, they're going to have to have the chicken permit, right?
Right.
Well, not if they've already had them.
That's another issue.
I was like, oh, God, I don't even want to go down that.
Really hope in our faces, but I I I'm.
Yeah.
I tell you, I am never ever ever one to live near a pig farm. I'm going to love the guy to death, but that was the nastiest smell for the longest time and. I'm sorry.
Horses, yep. Chickens, yep.
And pigs. I don't care about cows. Those are good. I mean, we're taking no active, right? We're just discussing.
Yeah.
So that's what I figured. That's what we did last time, isn't it? And it's also a discussion.
Yes, yes.
Perfect.
If I, I don't think anybody showed up today.
That's okay. This is perfect.
Oh, just wait for when they.
Oh, yeah.
Boarding guy.
Oh, my gosh, there's not enough seats in here, remember?
Oh, I know. Well, we'll probably have to move over to the middle school.
Well, I think we did a good job of letting the unincorporated people know that it's not affecting them.
Right.
Because a lot of them were unincorporated and they were like, you're getting rid of my problems and you're not in town.
One of the longer.
Well, that's what I don't understand. Why would you even want to be an F one in the village unless you already exist here? The only reason to join the village is to get the village perks and to sell for most part of your farm owner.
I'm so amazed. I watch you guys systems.
I I, if I was owned F and I was not in the village, unless I was going to develop my property or sell to a developed developer, I would not.
Yes, leave me alone. Yes.
Right.
Leave me alone. Leave me alone.
Yeah, I agree that. Anyone else have any comments on any of the other ones?
No.
I I have another question.
Yeah.
Sorry for being.
Oh, God. Hold on. She's what? He's what?
Your O R? That's the one that I think is dumb. Oh.
If there's a consensus amongst the planning zoning commission on eliminating one, by all means, I'm opening two ears.
So I don't understand, is O R a B or an M? Or a a neither? It's the gray area, so we make it O R. O R is Motorola, according to our current. Uh, planning plan. We are emulating the Motorola campus with the O R zoning. That is what we said back in two thousand and six.
Yeah, so it'll be for any high density offices, like a business campus.
Yeah, that. Route twenty, Tom Richards' property is O R. Actually, I thought it was O M.
O F.
Meadows.
Oh, you're.
They're they're new facility. You have it's O R, it's O R. I don't know if it's zone O R, but that's like hometown, right? Do we have any of that? Like, I mean, there's very little research facility that more so than this, but like. That to me is O R. Do we currently have O R?
We have O R and O M.
Do we have any O Rs? That's what I.
So it's here that we do.
Where?
Exist, let me show you.
I I know. Do we really have?
We have any in the village.
I know we have the last option, but we have any.
Oh, I.
Okay. I don't think.
See it.
It's O M. That's what Tom Richards is. He's O M, which I know.
Yeah, we have one R.
A C O M.
O R.
Who's that?
The the red spot there?
Yeah, the red spot.
What is the, can you zoom in a little bit?
Just a snip.
So that's back over by El Joy. So that's back over by Eljoy.
Wait, isn't that the Snot Plant?
No. Let me.
No.
You're looking at it, don't feel bad.
Oh, Arrowhead Drive. I know where we are.
Oh, we got our trucks out.
Yes, so that M two is Eljoy.
Yes.
Okay. What's O R? Who is there?
Uh, yes, I'm Hampshire.
Ooh.
Is that behind the field of the, um, the gliders and stuff?
Yes.
Uh huh.
Eljoy Special Metal, so it's also Eljoy, but it's.
Oh, is that like their, where they stick their rafters?
Must be. Man, because the lack of R and we can. Combine that with another one, then we can.
Well, there's only one.
No, it's an empty field. It, it's, it's a cornfield.
Yeah.
Which one's that?
But it's O R. So, and zone for offices.
Yes, it is. It currently does not have any.
Oh, no, you're right.
Building sonic whatsoever.
Get rid of R?
Yeah.
Bye, O R.
I mean, unless, uh, unless Eljoy has some plans of putting.
Big campus.
A campus there, which I don't know, they're doing, they're doing some extensions over in their Elgin facility, so I don't, I don't know if they are.
But, so what would it be?
They, they could still be an M. You could still have office functions and an N.
Yep.
Right. So, but only on an, is it O M or M one?
But I think it'd be an M two would make sense to me.
Heavy industrial manufacturing?
Are they gonna, is that gonna hit in tax purposes between?
Oh, no, no, wait, oh, if you end up, if that gets moved over to an M two. You're definitely gonna have the hungry people that are, are right backing up. And, and I get there, I get they're not part of the village, but you're gonna have the hungry people that are gonna be.
Stinkers, you betcha.
Yeah. Running up our butts with.
They have already started.
Yep, yep. So I don't know, I don't know that we can.
I would say if it was an M one, a one M one, right? Limited light.
Even that, I think you're gonna.
It depends.
Well, you're gonna do it right there, cause you got a lamb that you're gonna change. You're gonna do it right there anyway.
O R becomes one.
You know, that's better than heavy uses.
It's a buffer between the M two and the wider people.
I mean, I can have any metal stamping, stamping companies in M one, right? Where they're gonna find the earth, the neighbors are opening up. Have a fit. That would be an M two and then it's not there.
Well, I guess.
M two's in the front.
I guess one of the questions is, and, and this really makes no difference to me though, is, is the definition of what low intensity actually is.
I, I have definitions, I'll be sharing them with you.
Are we gonna tie it back to N A I C S standards?
Yeah.
Perfect. Done. National standards, no ambiguity. Okay. It's, it's time census, technically?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, makes sense, cause that O F is gonna become M one.
Close out M one.
Ditch O R to.
M one and M three, or M two and three.
I can ditch O R. I have no problem about that.
Can I, can I jump subjects? The general intent of B one? Are we thinking that, um, we're trying to create like a special of this nice district? In like the State Street area, or is that more bigger scale?
No, more specific to State Street. That was my intent.
Okay. I just wanted a better understanding.
Or if we, you know, if we end up having another downtown area, then you know, that's like State Street, then that would be B one as well.
You're gonna get a definition of the.
Yeah, so white manufacturing is, you're gonna say it's kind of vague, but it's kind of my working definition right now. An establishment engaged manufacturing predominantly from previously prepared materials of finished products or parts. Including processing, fabrication, assembly, treatment and packaging of such products. And incidental storage, sales and distribution of such products. Provided all manufacturing activities are contained entirely within a building. And noise, odor, smoke, heat, glare and vibration resulting from the manufacturing activity are combined entirely within the building.
That's a low intensity.
Yeah. So I mean, within the building, so if you look at a building, you should be able to tell what's happening inside it, right?
Or feel.
Or feel it or hear it or.
Right.
Any of that.
Okay. That would be in an.
And heavy manufacturing is where there is a potential for.
The, what he's saying, that, the rest of that would fall into M two?
Yeah, it's heavy manufacturing. If you can feel it, you can hear it, you can whatever, then that's gonna be heavy manufacturing. And that's gonna be a special, what I propose is a special use in M two, so it goes to the zoning process. To make sure there's not adverse impact on the. These Jason areas.
Even at that, you have Illinois environmental regulations that limit decibels of the property line.
What's this size of O M right there? At least the top portion, I know it's kind of, I think it's like three hundred acres.
Three hundred acres.
Yeah, cause that was, that was the property that was going through all the, all the stuff. For the white products here that had all the big.
Blue block.
Yes.
That was my first meeting.
Oh, aren't you lucky? Anything else? Moving on. The view of proposed land uses.
So this one, you guys can tell me how you guys wanna do this right now. We can either take time on your own to review it and, and I don't know if you, how. Much time you buy, I know I only took it out last week, so I, and you guys all are busy with your own lives. So if you wanna just generally P is for permitted, so by right, that's a best special use, so it has come to the planning zoning commission. And then the those toward, um, what I did was, I didn't really reinvent the wheel. Um, I'm going to pull up on that.
Yeah, this would take a while to actually.
Digest.
Digest, thank you. So really, the only legend we has is the permitted and specialty.
Yeah, so there are only two abbreviations, pipes. So what I did was like, look at, looked at all our land uses that we have in our code right now, and I narrowed them down into similar uses. Um, so I didn't really like go out and like find a use and put it in a table. I took those in our code and just whittled it down. You know, cause there was like, I had maker, well, that can go onto department store or retail, general retail. Um, I will have to make changes, obviously, to this with the elimination of the O R, some of the O R's into the M ones and M twos. Uh, so that will be done for the next meeting, but for the most part, this is mimics or not mimics? I don't know what I'm gonna use right now.
Translates.
Translates from what we have and to more modern terms and modern uses. Um. Like, for example, golf, I will say I did add golf, but we've had a few inspiries of our golf courses. So I've added that to kind of like future proof this, so we're not coming back. So if there's been, if I got any calls about like particular uses that are not in it, then I may add like golf course. Um.
So we table this for the next meeting.
You don't have to table it, cause it's just discussion, there's no go on there. And I didn't expect to have a decision made on all this tonight. I just want to begin the presentation on it. Um, so what I'm really looking for is you guys looking at the zoning district, the bucket, and the uses, does this make sense? You know, do we wanna allow? A funeral home, you know, um. I, I don't have it as a B one, but if you say, you know, we think a funeral home should be in the downtown district, we'll discuss that. Um, I'm not proposing that, but we, you know, it's just an example. Um, so. The residential is pretty clear. I, I mean, there's single family duplex attached and a multifamily, that's kind of clear. Um, so I don't expect much discussion on that. It's really the, the commercial uses that I wanna have a discussion on. Um, but I didn't really change too much from what's in the code, just cleaned it up.
It made it so we didn't, this is kind of generalized and then everything after that.
Yeah, and everything will have definitions, cause currently a lot of our land uses, I mean, even though like massage or hotel motel is clearly, you know what it is. We should still have a definition for it. Uh, in the zoning process, somebody says, well, no, this is hotels, and no, this, a hotel's defined as this. And then we're gonna get those kind of definitions off of. Standardized language and not just making stuff up. Or standard definition.
Okay, so at the end of the day, what are we gonna be asked to do?
So for this part, you're gonna, we're gonna, you're, you're approving a text amendment to the zoning code.
Okay.
So we'll be updating the zoning districts. And then updating the land uses and what's permitted by right and what's permitted by special use. And then once that is done, we will go into the, the exercise of looking at the zoning map and saying this property should be zoned, this zoning, that should be zoned this. And then update and, and have a new zoning map based on the new classifications.
So these two go together?
Yeah.
Okay. And then it goes to property by property.
Yeah.
Okay. Questions?
Yes, yes.
Um, I have a couple of initial just language thoughts. Um, gas station? Could we? We, we incorporated EV charging into our zoning code. Um, could we consider changing that to a passenger automobile refueling facility, so we can also think about DC fast charging facilities in the future?
That's nice. I like that.
What was it, passenger?
Um, passenger automobile fueling facility is what I've seen in some other communities.
I noted that.
It's just buzz topic. I think ninety is an authorized corridor by state, so the opportunities.
Yeah.
Um. Other thing that I haven't seen in other building codes that I'm very much in tune with. Dandelion parking facilities, I know the village has two.
Mm hmm.
And that isn't currently in our. List.
It's in the current. But if you don't infer it, ordinance.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, so parking lot facility is a, are you wanna?
I would just call it a parking facility, cause it leaves you open for what kind of.
Such as decks and all of that.
Yes.
Parking facility, okay.
Um.
That's, yeah, that's, I know that's in our code right now.
Yeah.
Should be translated over to this.
Some, some really nice codes that I've looked at recently, South Holland, Michigan, actually. Breaks it up into like common use, like all of your residential uses are grouped together, et cetera. I'll send you it.
Okay.
Um, it's just, it's a nicer way to break them up. The way that they did it, and it's an attachment in their code. I'm, I'm sure in the definitions, they still let alphabetical, but they had an attachment to their code. Um, DeKalb, Wisconsin also does it really nice. But if we steal from South Holland, Michigan, they already have done all the research and they have all the code numbers that tied to this in the census too. So.
Borrow. Last field, borrow.
It is open source information on a public website.
So ask where is public information?
Do you have the ability to change a P D A into a, um, spreadsheet?
Yeah.
I'll send you the P D A.
Awesome.
Say if you need to do the other stuff, I can.
No, I have, I have.
More? That's enough for now. Um, unless we wanna talk about colleges versus research facilities. What's the difference? I agree. Um, and we don't say anything about trade schools. And I think our trade school and college are different, but.
Different.
Don't say anything.
Yeah. So.
Should we change college, university to like educational?
Yes, yes, I like that.
Cause I think you also have education facility, music, dancing, et cetera, is another.
Yeah, that's more like.
Yeah, I know what you're going for.
Yeah.
Research facility, that should be on its own. Cause you do a lot of different kinds of research.
But you could also be a institution like.
Biochemical research.
You could be University of Illinois Agriculture Extension doing research as a university.
But still, if they're, if they're doing anything.
Ed- educational research facility just can, can really, cause the land uses similar.
Yeah.
In terms of, and then the impact on, on adjacent properties are similar. Um, and you let me know if you guys want that to be a special use?
What did, what do you?
Biochemist research facility would be probably a different use.
Educational slash research facility? Or we can keep them separate and.
And then are you gonna keep schools separate or would schools be lumped into there too?
Well, you're, you're thinking public school.
Pass, pass the public school.
Public schools will be their own.
Of that, yeah, be the own thing.
Are, are you also envisioning private K through twelve efficiency?
I think that those, both the public and the private fall underneath the non, if they're non boarding. Will follow me that. That's how I kind of thought, thought it out. Because in the end, they're both schools.
Yeah.
Whether it's public or private, we run that zoning by this, in my opinion, is significant. And maybe school, where school, dance, music and like, maybe I clear up that where it's more like. You're a music teacher, you have a storefront and students come to your desk where that use was, and maybe I need to clean up the hell thing which. To make it better instead of calling it school.
So many different tangents I can go on, on the battlefield now. Have you ever read the current zoning work?
I'm still.
You have?
Sir. Use.
No. Cause you're thinking like risk, risk association. It's what goes on.
Time back to national.
Cause like, like what I'm looking. My thought processes is like for a college, university, that's a, that's a B use group.
Not necessarily. You're talking building codes. Not necessarily.
See the tangent we're going up on here?
Yes. But if, if we, if we stick with federally national American industry classification systems, like you said, he was pinning on it. There's no ambiguity. And that's what, they grab that and they do I B C B, so that. So we're going, we're still above that.
Again.
Okay, tell me that acronym one more time. If, if I send the current one to you, do you wanna send us?
The X is N A I C S.
Okay. Okay. It's just. This has already been defined federally, don't reinvent the wheel. Sorry, you can be racist, I'm gonna pick. Go over one. Anything else? Video gaming cafe?
Money maker. Huge money maker.
Do you not like the word? Well, it's, 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 to me, it's.
It is a true enough to me.
What do we, whiteboard?
Video gaming cafe.
What would you like it to be?
Well, I guess. It's, it's.
Video game.
It's something, it's something that's allowed in most restaurants for zoning.
No, so video gaming cafe is different than a restaurant.
Because it, that's just strictly.
I think there's an area that has to be a lot, but there's other ones too, Crystal Lake has, that there are restaurants that have a segregated section, strictly for.
Right, so it's, when we determine land use, it's a principal use of, so when you look at the video gaming cafe that we have here, the square footage is dominated by the video gaming machines, and the restaurant is incidental to that.
Yeah.
Whereas a, a restaurant like Copper Barrel, the primary square footage is dedicated to kitchen space and seating. And the video gaming section is incidental or accessory to the restaurant.
Yeah, X amount of units of the gaming are allowed to take for this whole square footage of the facility. Only so many, they can't, they're gonna have ten, depending on the square footage, so.
That's gonna stay a while.
That's. Stay the last six, man.
Six, unless you're a.
Six four restaurants to start, and then ten four if you're a truck stop.
Ten for a truck stop.
But these little restaurants, they can only say, regardless of their spring. Oh, Crystal Lake has the opposite.
It's definitely.
Villagers are even limiting it more than that, they're, they're dropping down.
They're limiting how many places they're allowing to.
Yeah, how many, yes, they're, they're setting up how many licenses that, that can be had for that, and they're also dropping down the numbers. You gotta have, if, well, let me rephrase that, if you have over a certain amount of numbers, there's additional criteria that you have to meet to be able to section it off.
That makes sense. Makes sense.
So that's something that. The village board may want to put additional restrictions on to compare to just a typical business? Is that what I'm hearing, and that's why we have it broken up? We just, we don't, we don't have many.
Yes.
Specific tools to allow for. Okay, further regulation, okay.
So just, I don't think we have a gaming, just gaming cafes.
We have. By next to OR.
Yeah.
I forgot what they call now.
Lucky, Diane's Lucky Seven.
You know, I'm, I'm going back to the golf course just for one reason and one reason only, is that maybe change it from golf course to outdoor entertainment, and the only reason why I'm saying that is because of any potentials, if somebody wants to come in and do like a paintball. Outdoor people.
Recreation establishment, wouldn't it?
I wouldn't say entertainment.
Okay.
Yeah, like if it was like a paintball, a driving range, or something like that, I would put down the rec- recreation.
Yeah, and and that's in there, recreation establishment.
What's a department store versus a retail store?
Coles.
Blocks.
Gross, gross. Gross, gross.
Blocks versus.
Is that the only thing?
Block versus tool.
Yeah.
Okay, I, in my head, I know what that means, but why do we have it twice? And why is one allowed in B one and the other one's not?
The department store will take a larger square footage, a larger footprint, so it's best to, if it was something along a major corridor, like seventy two.
Oh, got you.
Something like that.
Break down State Street, there's gonna be, you're gonna get an apartment stores there.
Yeah.
Oh, you'd be surprised.
So that's the difference.
My god. Here we go.
We'll be the next Macy's.
Yes.
Anything else?
Just for your grace. So yeah, I would ask you to review this, send your comments, and if you want, or keep them for the next meeting. Um, but I'll make the changes, you guys have mentioned, I'll adjust the land use table based on the elimination of the OR district. And spread those amongst the M one, M two, and then we present this. Uh, but yeah, if you, you know, take an hour to the, or the next month, to review and let me know your comments. Um, so, I know it's imperfect. It's not an exact sign, so.
All right. Love homework. Any old business?
Sorry. The. The fact subdivision for Turn and Da Vinci Drive were approved.
Wait, comment that again?
Turn and Da Vinci Drive in Ryanholm.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Not Ryanholm, Tustin, Lawrence.
Yeah.
Uh, came to you guys in July, was approved, and the variance for the bank was approved.
Okay, okay. Any other announcements?
Uh, no meeting on September eighth.
Where are you going, Mr. Khan?
I will be in Nebraska.
Nebraska.
What's in Nebraska?
University of Nebraska, football. And Washington Football, go every year.
Oh, that's it.
I'm flying there. Hour and a half flight.
Any other announcements? And again, I apologize, I was late.
It's okay.
Totally lost for a good time.
I was watching the Twins game.
All right, have a motion to adjourn.
I motion, we adjourn.
I second.
All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Next.